Good morning and welcome to the Society for Academic Emergency Medicine, SAM 20 virtual meeting. I am Dr. Jim Holmes, SAM president. SAM is the premier international organization representing researchers and educators in emergency medicine. In our work, SAM promotes and facilitates scientific discovery, educational innovation, and the professional and leadership development of our members. Today, we are proud to bring you a COVID-19 presentation entitled "Rebuilding After the COVID-19 Shutdown: Choices for the Healthcare System." During the presentation and during our questions and answer session, you will hear from Dr. Lisa Maragakis, Senior Director of Infection Prevention, Associate Professor of Medicine at Johns Hopkins Medicine, and Dr. Josh Sharfstein, Vice Dean for Public Health Practice and Community Engagement, Professor of the Practice at Johns Hopkins Medicine. They will share their experiences with the COVID-19 pandemic and pathways to the future, providing important information for us as we move forward. During the presentation, you may submit questions for the presenters by clicking the Q&amp;A button in your Zoom menu interface. Questions that are upvoted will be prioritized during our questions and answer session to start immediately after our presenters have concluded. We also want to recognize several experts that are joining us online behind the scenes and will be helping to answer questions throughout the presentation. They include Dr. Sanjay Gupta, Dr. Jean-San Skofe, Dr. Henderson McGinnis, and Dr. Neha Rocker. Thank you all for your time and expertise. It is greatly appreciated. To kick things off, I'd like to introduce Dr. Rich Rothman, SAM's COVID-19 Planning Chair, to provide the opening remarks for today's presentation. Dr. Rothman is the Executive Vice Chair in the Department of Emergency Medicine and Professor of Emergency Medicine at Johns Hopkins Medicine. His research program focuses on the interface of emergency medicine, episodic care, and infectious disease surveillance, diagnosis, and treatment, with research on very commonly occurring ED conditions, including pneumonia, skin and soft tissue infections, sepsis, HIV, STDs, influenza, and now COVID. He has particular expertise in the development, translation of rapid and novel molecular diagnostics. At Johns Hopkins, he works with an interdisciplinary research team, including investigators from emergency medicine, microbiology, infectious disease, and public health. Currently, Dr. Rothman serves as Principal Investigator for the NIH NIAID Center for Excellence for Influenza Surveillance and Research, as well as a lead on a BARDA Health and Human Subjects Cooperative Agreement to study new approaches to advance therapeutic trials for pandemic response. Dr. Rothman is also one of the founding members of the SAM MTI Group, a national network of academic emergency departments focused on research, practice, and policy on emerging transmissible infectious diseases. Welcome to you, and thank you for being here, Dr. Rothman.
Thank you, Dr. Holmes, and thank you to SAM for hosting today's COVID Talk. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Lisa Maragakis and Dr. Josh Sharfstein. As Dr. Holmes mentioned, Dr. Maragakis is an Associate Professor of Medicine at Johns Hopkins University School of Medicine, where she received her medical degree and postdoctoral infectious disease training, as well as a master's degree in public health from the Johns Hopkins University Bloomberg School of Public Health. Dr. Maragakis serves as Senior Director for Healthcare Epidemiology and Infection Prevention for the Johns Hopkins Health System in Baltimore, Maryland. Dr. Maragakis is also the Executive Director of the Biocontainment Unit at the Johns Hopkins Hospital. She serves as the co-chair of the Healthcare Infection Control Practice Advisory Committee for the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as co-chair for the 2020 update of the Shea IDSA Compendium of Strategies to Prevent Healthcare Associated Infections for research interests, integrate infection prevention, human factors engineering, implementation science, and mathematical modeling approaches to develop new interventions to prevent the transmission of high-consequence pathogens in healthcare settings. She's also joined by Dr. Josh Sharfstein, who is Vice Dean for Public Health Practice and Community Engagement and Professor of the Practice in Health Policy and Management at the Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. Previously, Dr. Sharfstein served as Secretary of the Maryland Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, Principal Deputy Commissioner of the U.S. FDA, and Commissioner of Health for Baltimore City. He's an elected member of the National Academy of Medicine and the National Academy of Public Health Administration. Dr. Sharfstein is also author of the Public Health Crisis Survival Guide: Leadership and Management in Trying Times, which was published in 2018. He's also the co-author of the book The Opioid Epidemic: What Everyone Needs to Know from Oxford University Press. The format for the session today is interactive, with questions and answers on the topic of rebuilding after the COVID-19 shutdown, choices for the healthcare system. I think you'll find the topic particularly timing, particularly relevant with the reopening that's occurred just over the past week during the SAM conference. Our experts will discuss the implications of this reopening for us as healthcare workers, as well as for our patients and the health of the public. Welcome, Dr. Sharfstein and Dr. Maragakis. Thank you for joining us.
Very well said. Thank you, Dr. Rothman. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Dr. Lisa Maragakis and Dr. Josh Sharfstein. Thank you both for joining us today. We are very appreciative of your time, and we look forward to your presentation. The floor is now yours.
Great. Thank you both very much, Dr. Rothman and Dr. Holmes. And good to see you, Lisa.
Good to see you too, Josh, and very happy to be here. I'm very grateful to SAM for inviting us to do this today.
Yes, and before we get started, I really want to thank all the SAM members who are out there, both providing critical healthcare services and leading in trying to understand how to improve our care of patients with COVID, as well as other conditions in an age of COVID. So Lisa, we've been asked to talk a little bit about what the new healthcare system might look like as it emerges from the pandemic. And I think one of the implications here is that it may not necessarily be the case that what we go back to or what we turn on is going to be exactly what we had left when things changed so quickly. Do you agree with that premise?
That's so true, Josh. We're asked frequently to say, when will we be back to normal? And I, in my opinion, we need to be seeking a new normal, and that will be some combination of the things that were working well before, of course, that we must resume and we are anxious to resume. And then blending into that, some of the best practices that have been developed in this time of crisis. The fact is that we had respiratory pathogens that caused severe disease and death and were a risk to both healthcare providers, as well as other patients, prior to this pandemic. And many of us, including Dr. Rothman and others, have done research on these, and we had things in place to mitigate that risk. But now, in the time of a pandemic and a pathogen that is potentially transmitted by the airborne route, we know that primarily it is transmitted by the droplet route, but there is still that question about airborne transmission. It has really challenged us to think about ways that we can use personal protective equipment and environmental controls to really mitigate that risk. And I think much of that can be carried forward as we think about achieving a new normal, a world in which we may have this pathogen still with us. And those of us who think a lot about infection prevention, public health, and respiratory viruses know that if it's not this one, another one will come along.
I know. I have told some people, you can tell someone is an expert in infection control and emergency preparedness when they say, you know, it could be worse, because there is, you know, there are all kinds of scenarios out there. So let me see, if we were to do this, let's say we were to go back in time, you know, three entire months, and we were to walk around the hospital together, and you were to look around, like we're sort of going back in time, you know, we're a little hazy, and we're walking around, what are the parts of the system that you would kind of go like, you know, that doesn't look so good in a COVID era? So like, for example, if we walk past just a packed waiting room, what would you be thinking? And maybe for each of these, talk about what we might look for in the future, you know, that would be a little bit safer from an infection control point of view.
It's such a great question, and it really points out that we have an opportunity and an obligation, I think, to look at our workflows and our physical spaces, really from stem to stern, in our healthcare delivery. So it actually even begins before the emergency room or the waiting room area. And that is how we connect with our patients, how we provide information to them, answer their questions, and in many cases, help them decide whether or not they need to come in and seek care in an emergency room. But then you point out, one of the veins of infection prevention existence, and that is the crowded waiting room. And it is a very high-risk area if people cannot be properly screened prior to entering that area. Unfortunately, given the challenges of throughput, they often spend a great deal of time there. There's typically, three months ago would have been a lot of visitors there with the patients and sitting in very close proximity. So some of the things that we can do are to do a good job of screening patients as they arrive to understand not only the triage process of the severity of their illness, but the nature of their illness, and incorporating a risk assessment so that we have a very quick knowledge of whether we think that they have something that might be communicable because of respiratory symptoms, rash, or fever, and then thinking about what kind of environmental and just controls we can put in place to separate those two streams of patients.
What about the physical design of waiting rooms? Do you think that those should be looked at as, you know, we head into a little bit of an uncertain future for the future of this pandemic?
I do, absolutely. And I was thinking this way before we had the COVID-19 situation. Actually, just a few months before that, we were faced with measles outbreaks in various locales, and Baltimore had that as well. And an airborne transmissible disease, you know, really raises all kinds of issues. Again, the things that I was mentioning, how we screen patients, just the fact that they must enter the door and walk across the crowded waiting room before speaking to our registration staff in most setups, causes some degree of risk. And during that measles situation, we were asked to close our emergency department waiting room on several occasions for two hours. So separate entrances and solving the screening process would really help.
I mean, it's pretty amazing right now, you know, states are thinking like, should we allow more than 10 healthy people together at one time, you know, let alone allow people to walk into a room that could have like 60 people who are coughing in it. So it's really just enormously high-risk kind of setting. Okay, so let's go back behind the, you know, behind the staff line, and now we're in the back of the emergency department. And maybe if we were to go back three months before, you know, there's some PPE around, but maybe that's not high of mind for everyone in quite the same way it is today. So how would you think about the approach to PPE, you know, more generally, as we, you know, see a falling number of COVID cases, but COVID is out there, people could be asymptomatic, you know, how does that change what emergency departments and other health clinics need to do?
Sure. So personal protective equipment figures very prominently in transmission-based precautions, the precautions that we take. One, you know, somebody has a certain disease or is likely to have a certain transmissible disease. But I think that this situation has certainly emphasized the need for standard precautions and for more robust standard precautions with all patients. Again, it's a time period problem, essentially. When are we first encountering the patient, and how long do we spend in close proximity to that patient before we determine what it is that they might have? And so, long before COVID-19, we were facing exposure investigations and infectious disease exposures due to tuberculosis, varicella, measles, mumps, other things on a regular basis. And despite astute clinicians' ability to sort out the risk factors for that upon history and physical, inevitably, we would have staff members who were potentially exposed somewhere in that process. So personal protective equipment, I think that what we're doing now with universal masking and face shields takes us a long way to mitigating that risk, so that even if we later decide or discover that a patient does have COVID-19 or another infectious disease, the mitigation of the risk has already happened. And then there's the issue of, I'm sorry, respirators, you know, and so, right, so more ubiquitous use of a lower threshold to use respirators, N95 respirators, or powered air purifying respirators, and certainly, you know, I think hospitals, health systems around the world are trying to increase their inventory of this personal protective equipment to make it available. And I anticipate we will be using that type of equipment much more frequently for the high-risk procedures like intubation, extubation, aerosol generating procedures going forward for standard precautions reasons.
Got it. Now, we're still behind, you know, in the staff area. There are break rooms where people congregate, there are sort of congregate areas where people are writing notes. Are those all part of the equation as you're thinking about infection control and the new normal?
They absolutely are. And so, we have monitored very closely in our hospital and health system transmissions, acquisitions of COVID-19 by our employees. And unfortunately, we have had employees who have contracted the disease. When we look at these, many of them appear to be community-acquired. And what we know is that environmental controls like negative pressure rooms and ventilation, in combination with personal protective equipment, when properly utilized, seems to be very, very protective. But the workplace in a hospital is like any workplace. People congregate, they're in close proximity to each other, and you mentioned break rooms, which are a high-risk area, we have found, even with universal masking. This is an area where people remove their mask because they're drinking and eating, and those areas are often quite crowded, quite small, and people forget about social distancing. So we've had several exposures and transmissions that we think are linked to that.
So we won't go all around the hospital, but I am interested, since you mentioned that, about like some of the common places where people congregate in the hospital setting, and particularly cafeteria comes to mind. I've been in some very crowded lines in cafeterias. If you think about Johns Hopkins has sort of like an eatery area where it's kind of like a crush of humanity at lunchtime. And I just wonder whether you think we're going to be thinking about infection control just from top to bottom for all the people who are in? And have you been starting to think about how the entire hospital has to be rethought?
We have been thinking about that as many businesses and retail locations, schools, and bars and restaurants are thinking through all of these same types of things. And I think for the foreseeable future, while this virus is circulating, we will have to adapt to a new normal and put in place some infection prevention interventions. My local grocery store, I thought, did a fantastic job early on as an essential retail location that remained open. I could think of a dozen things that they did to ensure environmental disinfection was occurring, to promote social distancing amongst their customers, and to protect their staff members who come in contact, obviously, with a large number of customers. So I think those types of things we're going to have to do, particularly, as you say, in food service areas and places where people congregate. It's a challenge.
Yeah, well, I certainly remember when, you know, there were big discussions about whether the food was healthy or not in those cafeterias, and now it's the cafeterias themselves. One last question for you, maybe in this, which is, can we get out of all this through testing? Is there like some quick test we could give people at the door, staff, patients, sort the people who are, you know, infected and not? Do we think that that's going to be a way to say, you know, let's use a testing upfront in order to spare us the expense and time of all these different kinds of system changes?
So testing is a real problem. As we all know, the supply chain has made it a challenge to have enough testing kits, and many places like Johns Hopkins have continued to validate platform after platform in order to make a patchwork so that we have enough to test symptomatic patients. But the question really is, if we have unlimited testing, would that alone, you know, be the gateway out of this? And I guess I would say it's a piece of the strategy, but it still will need to be combined with infection prevention strategies, risk assessment, and the types of interventions we've been discussing today. And that's really for a variety of reasons, including the sensitivity and specificity of the test, but primarily the fact that we know that it's not positive until just before symptoms begin or when symptoms are there.
And the infectious period may be earlier.
Correct, yes. So you can transmit it during that pre-symptomatic or sometimes asymptomatic phase. That's not the total answer.
Yeah. Well, I think it's going to be very interesting to see how different types of healthcare settings are able to change and still provide, you know, great care and have enthusiastic and dedicated staff. You know, I think some of the potential, you know, changes will make it, will change the workplace in ways that we don't really anticipate, and paying attention to people's ability to be happy at work is also going to be important in that, too.
It's so true, Josh. Even just having the confidence to come to work and to know that you're safe is so important in any environment, but in the healthcare environment, particularly given our patient care responsibilities. Perhaps we should turn now, and I'll turn the tables and ask you some questions from the public health standpoint, because I am quite curious about how you perceive the preparedness that has been going on for years, if not decades, pandemic preparedness and exercises and planning. And I wonder how you see the broad topic of what we have learned from our response to date, and how you think it's working and not working, and what we could do differently from our lessons learned.
Sure. Thanks so much for asking that. I think there are really two sets of answers to that. One is very narrowly focused on the kind of work that the public health community and healthcare did together on preparedness, and the other is just more generally a comment about the healthcare system. I recently had the opportunity to interview Julie Gerberding, the former CDC director for our podcast, the episode will be out soon, it's called the Public Health On Call Podcast, if you haven't seen it. And I asked her this exact question, and I was particularly interested in her answer, because she really championed preparedness when she was the CDC director for seven years. She actually accomplished a great deal of things. One of the things, for example, she did was make sure there were extra flocks of chickens around to produce the eggs for the flu vaccine. So when H1N1 hit, we had a pandemic flu vaccine quicker than ever before. And I remember that because I was at FDA at that time, and I thanked the Bush administration and Dr. Gerberding publicly for having prepared the nation for that. And I was at a congressional hearing, and I said, you know, for these chickens, which ordinarily are making eggs, if there's no pandemic, the eggs go into the food supply. I said, but for these chickens, this is their moment, you know, and they delivered, and we had a vaccine very quickly. The, I don't think the FDA congressional staff ever forgave me for that line, just as an aside. But the truth is, we thought a lot about the influenza pandemic and how to get a vaccine quickly, how to do, you know, how to make antivirals available quickly, you know, how to immunize people when a vaccine came available in roughly six months' time, you know. There was also a lot of planning around certain terrorism scenarios, like an anthrax attack, and stockpiled medicines. And there was an awareness that a respiratory pandemic could be caused by coronavirus from SARS. There was a lot of concern about it. There was actually a lot of, you know, simulations that were done, reports that were written. But, you know, I think public health tended to, and more than, I mean, public health was, I could point to many reports, very concerned. But I think, in general, the response was very focused on the threat of bioterrorism, and to the extent we were thinking about natural pathogens, it was very much limited to pandemic flu. And I think, and you'll hear Dr. Gerberding's responses when you listen to the podcast, but I think, you know, realizing that there really needed to be a broader response, and that the kinds of, and an example of that would be around testing. I was the acting commissioner of FDA when the H1N1 started, and we authorized an EUA very, very quickly, an emergency use authorization, the first one ever. I signed for a test for H1N1, and it was built on a platform that already existed for flu. So it was very, very quick and easy for CDC to do. Similarly, we had Tamiflu, we authorized soltamivir, you know, dosing for infants as an EUA. We quickly, you know, switched the flu strain, you know, we activated the plan for the flu vaccine. All that was based on the flu, the flu infrastructure. So but none of those things are as easy these days in a different pathogen. There is no system for a rapid coronavirus test in the same way. So it had to be built, you know, based on just the building blocks, the PCR technology, and then CDC had a big problem in its lab. And so, you know, now suddenly there are all these different, you know, places that have no tests as the virus was spreading. So that made it much harder. So, you know, all the therapeutics have to be studied from scratch. The vaccines have to be created from scratch. So it's definitely created huge, huge, you know, note of how we need to prepare better. And clearly, you know, the unappreciation of the urgent need for PPE is really, really important. You know, I would say also in that, that I don't think this kind of response was inevitable. I think even with those limitations, even with the fact that, in general, we overprepared for flu and terrorism compared to this, at least, I think that there were some major gaps in the federal response, particularly that continue, and including the failure to really take control of the supply chain in a way that would really be supportive of clinical care, both for PPE testing supplies and other sorts of things up to, including therapeutics now. So that's sort of the preparedness side, but I would just shift a little and also say, we should just talk about the healthcare system. I think there was an appreciation for how fragile our systems are in the healthcare system. We had just-in-time inventory for drugs and supplies. Payment is largely fee-for-service. I mean, I think you'd have to give, not the people of the healthcare system who get an A for courage and, you know, incredible dedication, but the healthcare system itself, I don't think it's a passing grade for being able to be able to flex for this kind of crisis. We've had recurrent shortages of medicines. We've had terrible shortages of PPE, and the hospitals in many parts of the country and healthcare systems are just hemorrhaging money because they can't do fee-for-service care. It's been very difficult for many places to transition to other forms of care. We have not had a resilient, you know, policy system for healthcare. And I think, just like the discussion we had about walking around the hospital and, you know, going back and seeing like, well, that can't stand anymore, that can't stand anymore. When I think about healthcare policy, I think we should have that same kind of discussion that there are some things that we did because maybe it made somebody, you know, more money in the short term. We can't do anymore because it's dangerous, really, in this kind of setting.
You raise a great point about the supply chain. To me, this was one of the great surprises and disappointments. As if facing a pandemic wasn't large enough of a challenge to be faced with such supply chain challenges was really unthinkable, the kinds of Uh, the, the kinds of things that we have not had easy access to, including personal protective equipment. But as you mentioned, pharmaceuticals for caring for critically ill patients and even, uh, things like hand sanitizer and disinfectant. And so the very building blocks of responding to an infectious threat have been, uh, have been missing and required innovation, uh, and, and production. I also am surprised at the, um, amount of time that has gone, gone by before we could mount a, a solution to some of those challenges and, uh, the sort of homemade nature of a lot of the things, um, that we were forced to, uh, to put in place. Uh, I wonder if you have thoughts about how we could make a more robust, uh, supply chain, especially for those things we need in healthcare?
Sure. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not because we don't spend enough for healthcare. You know, I mean, the United States spends so much more than every other country. Um, and there are many other countries that have thought this through a little better than us. Part of the answer is stockpiling. I mean, I, I certainly hope somebody is going to be stockpiling swabs after this is all done and some of these other critical supplies. But I think really the whole nature of the supply chain has to be, um, thought about, too. And I'll just give a few examples. One would be that, um, I think some hospitals are finding themselves in, in sort of exclusive contracts with certain suppliers and are finding it very hard to get out of that, to get supplies in other areas. We have just so many middle companies in the supply chain. Um, and I think it's important to really ask what value they bring in this kind of scenario. And so maybe there is a moment where a button gets pushed and all these contracts, you know, can't limit what people can get. Um, I also think that in terms of the production, I think that, uh, critical supplies should have essentially a long shelf in them. Like the, the, the manufacturer should be required to, you know, put on the, you know, if it's a three-year, um, expiration, they put it on and they, they take it off with two years and six months to go. And there's a six-month supply sitting there in, you know, somewhere. Uh, could be at the factory, could be somewhere else, but it's basically a revolving supply of critical medications. And it's not the case that everybody's in just-in-time supply chain. And then as soon as you need more than what you needed yesterday, it's like a crisis. And, um, so I, I think that that's a second important thing. And then third is I think you got to pay attention to the market, you know? And, um, is it the case that there is, um, an, you know, a contraction of competition, too few suppliers, too many single points of failure? So that has got to be, you know, important to look at. And then, uh, you know, there's a sensitive topic, which I'll just mention, which is domestic production. So, you know, we saw with the, um, initial, uh, PPE, um, you know, different countries saying, we're not, nobody's exporting any PPE for the moment. We're just going to, you know, do, um, you know, what we're going to do. And, and so in a, in a totally international system, the PPE production would just go to the right place for efficiency. But if there does need to be some core national production, then countries should probably stand that up, even if it's a little bit more expensive and people are going to have to pay a little bit more. So I think all of those kinds of things have to be on the table to, to really strengthen the supply chain.
A lot of, a lot of great ideas and, and certainly food for thought for, for many people going forward. Um, I wanted to turn back, Josh, if you don't mind, to the idea of the healthcare delivery system and talk about, uh, some of the innovations or, or good things that may have come out of this. And one of them that comes to mind is telemedicine that has been used to really try to provide advice, uh, and handle the medical, uh, issues of patients, keeping them out of our emergency departments, uh, if they have COVID-19 concerns, but also bridging them, uh, providing care, uh, when we are not having ambulatory clinic visits and the like. Do you, do you have thoughts about the future of telemedicine and, and other innovations like it that might change the face of healthcare delivery going forward?
Yeah, I, I think I would be far from the first person to say this is a potential to cause a revolution in clinical care. I think people are really figuring out, um, if they don't need to see patients in person, that there are plenty of other really good alternatives. And that, um, you know, includes, uh, all kinds of different clinical care. There was a great op-ed in the Washington Post by this journalist, Jason Chirkas. And he is writing a book on suicide. And he said, you know, at one point, he interviewed someone who was suicidal and was told to go to the ER and had to wait for eight hours, got more depressed, decided he didn't want to, you know, see anybody and went home and just, you know, was miserable. And, um, you know, the, the fact that our treatment system would require someone to travel that far to be sitting in a waiting room, obviously potentially exposed to respiratory pathogens, among other things, sit in a, you know, little tiny room in the most stressful environment in the world, you know, for, for a, um, for depression. I mean, if you started from, you know, square one about why you would have people do that, it really wouldn't make sense. And now, of course, people are saying, don't come to the emergency room. Let's get a therapist on the phone with you immediately and let's figure out where you really are right at that moment. Spare the eight hours, spare all these different things. Really be able to do a good assessment over the phone, talk to somebody about how they're doing. And, um, a clinician. And, you know, how can you not say that's better, that's not better care? I mean, you know, more rapid, more, uh, you know, clear assessment. The person could feel much better sooner or, you know, truly be referred to, um, care that they actually need, rather than just said, well, you know, you got to go in. So, um, that's one example. My wife is an addiction medicine physician. And, um, you know, she has the ability now to start people very quickly on addiction treatment, um, that they need. And, uh, because of some flexibility that they have now, um, and that has actually increased access to care for patients. So I, I think that, uh, there's a lot to be said for, um, the ability to see patients in their home environment, help them with chronic care, you know, conditions, and really reserve physical exams and other in-person things for when they're needed. We're likely to go through a period where, you know, doctors aren't going to be that excited to have so many patients that they don't know how they're doing. They're really going to want to know who comes into the office, really needs to be there. And I think that creates this great opportunity to, to rethink, you know, clinical practice. I don't think that means doctors are less busy, but I think it probably means that, um, there's a whole team of people supporting, you know, all kinds of different, uh, types of communication for different, different kinds of patients. I, I think there's, there's a lot of promise, but I do think as we do that, we really have to make sure that the reimbursement system can, can keep up with that. And, um, I can tell you from having been House Secretary that there was a lot of concern around telemedicine. We expanded telemedicine a lot in Maryland, but there was a lot of concern that we'd get all the visits plus a lot of telemedicine visits. That if we just did a fee-for-service reimbursement for telemedicine, that it would just be massively more expensive and people would be doing telemedicine to try to figure out who they could do a procedure of questionable necessity on. And it would just be driving up costs without improving health. And so I think if we're thinking about this shift, it's important to think about the shift in payment that, um, should come. I, I'm not, you know, I'm somewhat lukewarm on the idea of we should just be continuing to fund every kind of treatment, fee-for-service, and just hope that, you know, it'll all sort out. I think it may be better to provide consistent, stable patients, uh, payments to clinicians and give them the flexibility to develop a system that really works well for, for patients without kind of, you know, putting your finger on the scale and saying, coming into the hospitals is going to pay you more.
One of the other, uh, challenges I think we should, uh, talk about is academic medicine and the, the trainees that really depend upon, uh, being immersed in the clinical environment to, uh, to learn about nursing and, uh, and, and medicine and their, their specialty, uh, care. So really trainees all, all along from medical school, uh, nursing school, up through residency and fellowships. I know from an infection prevention standpoint, um, we take very similar approaches to protecting, uh, these individuals, uh, as we do to the, the frontline staff with regards to PPE and environmental controls and, uh, and processes. But during this pandemic, we have excluded, um, some trainees from, uh, clinical care, both for their own protection and also to, um, reduce our burn rate of personal protective equipment. What, what are your thoughts about trainees and, uh, in this situation and, and going forward?
So I think that it creates an opportunity to really rethink, you know, clinical training in some ways. And I wish I had this idea, but actually it was one of our students or a couple of our students' idea. We had a, um, op-ed contest for the medical students and public health students, um, at, at Johns Hopkins. And, um, here's just a, a pro tip. If you're going to tell people, you will read and give comments on every op-ed that comes into the op-ed contest. You should have a good idea of how many op-eds you're going to get before making that promise. So we had a lot of op-eds submitted, I'll just say. And I spent a good chunk of a weekend, um, reviewing them, and they were on all kinds of interesting issues. One of the, uh, ones that, um, actually won the contest, we had a former op-ed editor from the Baltimore Sun-Judgeet, talked about the idea of, was actually from a group of medical students saying, we should have real certified skills while we're in the hospital. We shouldn't be nothing, 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 nothing. Here's your MD. You know, that we're just totally in this student status and then here's your MD. And, um, actually, I gave a talk at my med school graduation where I was joking, if we didn't have our MD, what would we be able to do? You know, maybe, and I said like, you know, open a sandwich shop with very good, you know, hygiene, because we would wash our hands for 20 minutes before we made a sandwich, making a joke about my surgery rotation, basically. But like, you know, this, these medical students said, why don't we do EMT training right at the beginning? Why don't we have some actual certification so we could actually immediately switch into an actual role in the hospital and we wouldn't just be purely students? I think it's a provocative idea. And, you know, one way to think about students, people, you know, students may get trained in advanced life support or basic life support before they go on the wards, but maybe they should get some additional type of training. I think we might all agree they should get training on, on PPE, um, and other things. But maybe there are certain roles that they could immediately assume and, and help in different ways. So that, 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 that's one thought. I think the other, you know, broader idea is that there may well be times where there's, you know, students really can't be there. And we should find something else that they can do that's really contributing to the overall effort. It's obviously going to be an extraordinary situation like we're in now when students can't do it, do something. And, um, I wrote, uh, a piece with the editor of JAMA about, maybe we could take medical students or prospective medical students and turn them into public health workers for a year. Um, and that would give them tremendous experience and really accelerate, uh, the work tracking down the virus and keeping it from spreading from person to person, um, as part of a, you know, major effort on contact tracing. And I think the idea there was not just to be limited to medical students, but really the principle that, rather than just say, sorry, you can't come to class, let's give them something else to do or you can come into the wards, that is really relevant to their career, that could make them better clinicians in the future and really does matter for the response.
It's such a, such a great point. And, uh, as I hear you describe it, I think it applies not only to students, but, um, to all of us really in, in various, uh, roles in the healthcare, uh, setting. One of the biggest challenges during this response, other than supply chain and testing, uh, has been, uh, the staffing. Uh, and, um, apart from being overrun in, in the emergency department, like some hospitals were in New York and, and other places, the biggest longer-term challenge, I think, has been not ventilators and beds, but, um, but staff qualified to run those ventilators and to provide critical care services and, and other things. And so, um, many healthcare systems, including our own, have been redeploying and in many cases, retraining staff, uh, as respiratory therapists, um, as, uh, critical care providers and, uh, changing the model of care delivery in that way. So skills-based certifications, I, I think is, uh, a very important thing to keep in mind.
Increase, increase redundancy and resilience within the healthcare environment. You could have the medical students choosing, I'll be a backup respiratory therapist or I'll be an EMT or one of those other kinds of things. Interesting.
Correct, correct. Well, I've enjoyed talking with you today. I, um, uh, mindful of the time and, and think maybe we'll turn it, uh, back to Dr. Holmes and see if there are questions, uh, from the audience.
Thank you both for this timely and insightful presentation. I think I might have, uh, my reimagining committee watch this video as they make their decisions on what they're going to do as we reopen our hospital. In a few moments, we will answer questions from the audience. As a reminder, for those who are attending the live session, please send your questions via the Q and A pop-up window by clicking the Q and A button in your Zoom menu interface. We will try to get as many questions as possible in the remaining time. While we wait for the questions to come in, I want to ask you, Dr. Maragakis, what developments might allow us to have a more routine approach to COVID so that it becomes more like influenza or just one of the many medical conditions we encounter in emergency medicine?
It's a great question. COVID-19 has really taken over so much of what we think about and, and what we do on a daily basis now. But what we are, are seeing is a return of patients, uh, into our emergency departments, many of whom have been waiting, um, to seek care and are, are sicker now. So, uh, we will need to achieve a, a new balance between COVID and, and non-COVID illness. I, I really think that having, uh, a vaccine and/or a therapy available will be critical steps, uh, to feeling like, uh, COVID-19 is, is, uh, less of a threat and more of a, you know, one of the things, uh, that, that we are looking, uh, to treat like influenza. Um, and I guess the other thing would be, um, if so many people in the community had, uh, had the virus and we find out that, that they have immunity, um, for some period of time after natural infection.
Yes. Thank you very much. A question for Dr. Scharfstein from Prague area. As a Canadian, I'm wondering if the PPE situation has improved in the United States and if the government has used the Defense Production Act to improve the US supply chain for essential items such as PPE. Is it more state-specific as some states have banded together to try to help each other purchase PPE during this time?
So I think an important thing to understand about PPE as well as other very serious supply chain issues is that it's both about purchasing power and distribution. So, um, it's not just about how you buy it, but how you make sure it gets to where it's needed to go, how there's not one place that has a whole lot of it and the other place is, you know, reusing their masks for two weeks. And so in general, the federal government in the United States has not taken on the supply chain challenge. And that, I think, is, uh, probably one of the biggest shocks to people who worked on thinking through the federal role. And the fact that we have hospitals competing against hospitals, competing against cities, competing against everybody else out there. Recently, there was just, uh, the FDA basically said a whole bunch of masks that have come in are not high quality. I mean, all these things are supply chain issues and having a chaotic, you know, distributed approach to supply chain is, is really, uh, hurt the United States. And testing is another good example. The academic medical centers wrote to the vice president. After the vice president said, seems like there are plenty of supplies. I don't know, I'm paraphrasing, I don't know why there are not more testing being done. And they wrote back and they said, you know, we could have one system that has three or four supplies necessary. We can't use it. And yet, um, another system has two or four supplies and some other place has that missing supply, but not the other one. None of us can test. If the federal government, you know, stood up a, a logistics effort to get the right supplies to people, then everyone would know which system they're going to use. And instead, it's totally chaotic. So, um, it's, uh, I think there, there may have been some Defense Production Act invocation, but overall, um, I don't think you can give the federal government more than enough on supply chain management right now. It's one of the major challenges that has really hurt the United States in the last couple of months.
Yeah, that's very unfortunate. For our next question goes to Dr. Maragakis. Do you anticipate ED overcrowding will become an issue again? And I think many of us do. Are there any specific interventions that you would recommend for ED waiting rooms, such as masking all patients, plexiglass between chairs in the waiting room, and continuing to limit or not allow family and friends in the emergency department?
Yes, thank you for that question. Unfortunately, I do anticipate, uh, crowding, uh, and a surge into our emergency departments. In fact, uh, I, I think I mentioned, we've already started to see the return of the, um, patients with other medical conditions, many of whom have been waiting, um, and, and becoming more acutely ill. So, uh, we will have, um, I think, increasing numbers. I, I'm also concerned, of course, about the reopening, uh, that we are seeing in many states and communities in this country and that that may lead to a surge of, uh, COVID-19. of COVID nineteen patients with with that disease. So the things that you mentioned, I think are all good ideas and ways to mitigate the risk in waiting rooms as we have them currently configured. Obviously, we can't you know, really substantially change the layout of our physical buildings right now unless we're fortunate enough to be building a new building right now and and affect the planning. But I do think in the future, when we are in the position to do that, we need to think about entrances, separate entrances and and ways to triage patients before they land into those waiting areas. And and potentially, as as the question suggests, ways to have partitions or separate areas for people to wait where we don't have large congregations of people that are sitting very close together.
Yes, thank you very much. A question for Dr. Scharfstein from Edward Michelson. What is our vulnerability as a medical system from many of our critical medications and PPE coming from China?
Thanks for the question. I think that that kind of related to my earlier point about domestic production. You know, I think that this is gonna be a question that, setting aside China particularly, I think it's just gonna be a question about domestic production for critical supplies. And I think that we can see it's not just China that has the ability to snap to a very like, this is our this is in our land, this is our product kind of attitude and under this kind of existential sort of threat. And so I I think that probably it does not make sense for everybody to have a complete supply of everything in their own country. On the other hand, I think having some supply and some ability to manufacture in your own country probably does make more sense than we might have appreciated. And more redundancy in production will just be more helpful globally. You know, this is, this is a virus that threatens all of humankind and you want to see a lot of collaboration. It's like an alien invasion, you know, I mean, we wouldn't want to just be thinking about, you know, a narrow population if if the threat is to everybody. So hopefully there will continue to be collaboration. But what we see in with the, going back to China is that, you know, supply chain is gonna get disrupted in one part of the world. And so it probably, you know, developed for a certain reason because of the cost and the infrastructure and the environment that they had and in you know, that made things just so much easier to produce there. But just like other kinds of efficient systems for the usual day, they're not that resilient when you really need them. And we're gonna have to pay for resilience and part of that's gonna be more production capacity elsewhere.
Thank you very much. We have time probably for one final question and I'll direct it to Dr. Maragakis. Because you talked a little bit about break rooms in the ED. So do we need to repurpose these break rooms? And what should be the solution? It's to still protect people during their breaks?
So it's a, it's a large challenge. And as I mentioned, people of course remove their masks when they're in their break room to eat and drink. As I said, we can't really change the physical spaces that we have, but I think it is worth looking around and problem solving to see if there are other areas in which people in the emergency department can take their breaks. We're fortunate in this country to be going into better weather, so perhaps even outdoor spaces might be considered. And then even just looking at the timing and rotation of who takes a break and when that occurs so that we can limit the number of people taking a break at any one time. But it really all comes down to social distancing, especially when the masks are removed.
All right. Thank you very much. And I unfortunately, that is the last question we have time for today. Thank you again to Dr. Maragakis and Dr. Scharfstein for sharing your incredible stories and for helping the rest of the country prepare just a little better for life after the COVID nineteen pandemic. Dr. Rothman, do you have any final remarks?
Yeah, just very quickly. So I just wanted to thank my colleagues, Lisa and Josh for for joining. I know you're both super busy, so really appreciate. I think the format was great, the conversations excellent. I think just a few quick summaries. One is it's clear that the shock associated with what's going on for the healthcare system is gonna lead to lasting changes and the healthcare system is not gonna go back to just the way it was. Some of the changes that were discussed are the changes that the way the hospital actually operates. And we've discussed some of those in terms of waiting room, tele-visits and other types of adjustments. And some of the changes may be larger in terms of the reimbursements and the way the health system pays for care that hopefully would ultimately lead to greater flexibility both for patients and clinicians. From the standpoint of the society of academic emergency medicine, emergency medicine at large and individual emergency physicians at their at their home shops. I think there's an opportunity to take some of the difficult and painful experiences that have happened associated with the pandemic over the past few months as a transformative opportunity for changes in healthcare delivery. And hopefully to introduce positive changes for, that would include delivery of more effective emergency services. Ultimately, I think we can work together to redesign systems and our own places to be able to improve individual patient care and and attend to the to the health of the public at the same time. These are challenging times and I again, just thank you, Dr. Scharfstein and Dr. Maragakis for the valuable experiences and sharing your expertise with the emergency medicine community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rothman. And thank you again to our speakers and to all the viewers for joining us today. This concludes our special COVID session for today. In a few moments, we will begin our plenary abstract presentations on SEM's YouTube channel and Facebook Live. We hope you will join us there now. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.